And with that, Mr. Bear, I will open it up to you to give your opening statement.
Well, thank you. Welcome, everyone. Thank you to the task force, your hard work, and welcome to my fellow candidates. Don't mistake my relative calmness in speaking out as hiding my complete outrage at the sounds, the danger, the motorcycles in the streets, insanity what's going on, and how for six months or more incumbents and people who are hardly in office have not taken any significant action. I will say this, and God be my word, just Saturday, I was going to a fast food Chinese place, and on the way back, I had to right away to cross the street. I was one quarter across the street, and about a dozen motorcycles and deafening sound like my ears ringing ran right through the red light. I was about 10 feet from being killed. In the sense that they would have run over me repeatedly and would have been laughing at the whole thing. That's how it felt. I cannot tell you how outraged I am. I am the one candidate who is going to take care of this problem, and I promise it, and I got right here. Anyone sees me in the streets, including the petitions, that I'm actually working at with my staff. And I'm going to read to you what I plan to do when I get elected. Car motorcycle noise plan of action. One, all car motorcycle violators will be given a warning. Second time stop by police and they, police will act. I will be working with the police firsthand, first week in work. If you stop by the police, second time, $500 fine or 20 hours community service. Third time, stop, car motorcycle impounded and license suspended if they even have a license. They don't have a cut license or the car stolen, big trouble, and I'm going to have the police take full action. Those who are legal vehicles will be arrested. Speed bumps will be placed on Broadway. I'm going to do everything possible, including even having roadblocks if that's what's necessary. Motorcyclists on sidewalks will be arrested and charged with a felony immediately. Dramatic increase in police presence on all roads to address the violators. A police hotline for complaints where the police will actually show up at the scene of the violation within five minutes. While we're at it, music blasting in streets, I will promote legislation limiting noise so that neighborhoods are not traumatized by loud music. I don't want to walk the streets, as I will for the next four weeks as my new councilman, hearing about babies being woken up and people can't sleep at night during the workday. Here it is. Anyone contacting me, I'll be glad to send it to you. Something has to be done. We've had a year of beating up on the police, and yes, we have some bad cops in this country, but we have 37,000 cops or so. Fifty-seven percent are African-American, Hispanic, or Asian-American. We've got to move on from blaming all of them for a lot of, a few rotten apples and let them do their job, and let them really work and having, knowing that the politicians are on their side. I'm going to work with them. Don't get me wrong. I was outraged about what happened with Floyd and Chauvin and all that. But we have to have safe streets. No one should ever fear crossing the streets, and I had that traumatic event going on. I want everyone to know I have your back. I am promising and guaranteeing that one first week I will be on this and working at it, and I'm not going to stop until it's done. I believe in what was done in New Deal by Franklin Roosevelt. We will do everything possible. If one thing doesn't work, we'll do another. But law enforcement is going to do its job and the court system, and I welcome questions later on. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much, James. We appreciate it. Next up is Carmen de la Rosa, Assembly Member. Carmen de la Rosa.
Thank you for having me tonight. I'm going to apologize in advance because I do have a puppy, and he tends to go wild every time someone gets near the door. So if you hear barking, that's my puppy. I'm Carmen de la Rosa. Some of you know me as your Assemblywoman in the 72nd District. I'm running to earn your support for City Council District 10. I want to first thank you all, all the people who make up the Noise Task Force, for coming together, for being proactive, and for trying to be as inclusive as possible in bringing us solutions. There is a plan of action that you've already put together that I've reviewed. There are a lot of great points in that document, and I look forward to working with you to make those recommendations a reality. The first thing I will say about this community is that I am proud, a proud product of this community. I grew up here. I immigrated here from the Dominican Republic as a baby, and I grew up in Inwood my entire life. Growing up in Inwood and knowing what it was like to have 103 homicides a year to the community that we have now, there has been progress made. But I share the concerns of our neighbors when we see the noise, when we hear the noise, when we see some of the reckless driving that happens in our community. I think it's time for us to work together. All of us deserve to live in peace. Our family, our children, our pets deserve to live in peace in the rest of our homes. But we also have to be conscious of policing and what policing means in communities like ours. As someone who grew up in this community, I know what it's like to be stopped and frisked for no other reason than my skin color, for no other reason than the clothes I was wearing, for no other reason than standing in front of my building. We have to be able to coincide together while we also work to reform the things that are broken about our policing system. And we shouldn't have to make trade-offs. We deserve to live in peace. We also deserve to be safe. And so part of my vision, and I hope we'll get into it more than just these first three minutes, is for us to work with the structures that already exist. We have a community board. We have the Noise Task Force. We have the 34 precinct council, the 33rd precinct council, the 50th precinct council in Marble Hill. We have to work within the confines of what's there and bring our community along to make sure that the voices of those who live in the community are heard. We know that fireworks are a threat to not only our safety, but we saw last year that there were fires that began because of the fireworks. As the Assemblymember, I took action at that time. We talked to the 34th precinct, we talked to the 33rd precinct, and there was not much that could be done from that standpoint. I believe that one of the things we have to do is to educate our community. I myself went outside and talked to folks who were shooting off fireworks and said to them, "Do you understand the harm that this is causing for some of our neighbors that have heart conditions, that live in the lower floors, that are afraid of the fireworks coming into a community?" It's creative, it's community and coalition that is going to allow us to move forward. In addition to that, we have our small businesses. We want our small businesses to thrive. Many of these businesses are black and brown-owned businesses. But our businesses also have a responsibility to be responsible neighbors that take care of our community. So one of the things that I'm proposing, and that we'll talk more during the forum, is an incentive, I'm almost done, just going to finish the sentence, an incentive to make sure that they can soundproof their businesses without harming their bottom lines. We should be able to live together, and I'm here because that is under the spirit in which I guide myself. I guide my office, and I look forward to us coming up with solutions together. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay, now next up, we have Angela Fernandez.
Hi, thank you so much. I'm going to use my three minutes to introduce myself because I think some of you may not know who I am because I've been very busy in the trenches, working for all of you over the last 20 years. My name is Angela Fernandez, and I'm running for City Council District 10. My mother worked in factories to produce the only lawyer in the family. I graduated from Columbia Law School, and my mother said, "Angela, with that very powerful tool, you must use it to uplift our community," which is what I've done for the last 20 years. I ran the Northern Manhattan Coalition for Immigrant Rights for 10 years, preventing the deportation of thousands of our neighbors, helping thousands of our neighbors become US citizens, and co-writing the sanctuary laws, hand in hand with people who were directly impacted, people who are in deportation proceedings, and we were able to successfully pass those laws, and those laws became a model for cities across the country. I then became the New York State Commissioner for the Division of Human Rights, running a 200-person agency of investigators, lawyers, and administrative law judges. And what I did within a year was to be able to turn that agency around and have it apply the New York State Human Rights Law, the oldest anti-discrimination law in the country, much more aggressively, resulting in higher damages, a 25% increase in monetary damages for people who have been discriminated against and winning many more cases. I'm 50 years old. I'm a single mom. I live in 183rd Street and Port Washington Avenue. And I am the only candidate that has led multiple local and national social justice movements that have actually won transformational policies that have benefited tens of thousands of people. I'm also the only candidate that has worked in leadership positions at the federal level, state level, and city level, all three branches of government. At the federal level, I was the District Chief of Staff for Congressman Jose Serrano in the Bronx. At the state level, as I mentioned before, I was the New York State Commissioner for the Division of Human Rights. And at the city level, I was on the Board of the New York City Civilian Complaint Review Board, the largest oversight police agency in the country for three years, investigating and adjudicating cases of police brutality. And our issues are so complex that we need a city council member that understands how to move all the levers of government so that we can actually come and develop solutions together. I am the only candidate that has been an executive director, and a director meaning that I can take a vision and idea and make it a reality, and I've done this multiple times over. I sweat the details, and as a result, that actually helps us get meaningful changes without the unintended consequences when we push for change that does not think through everything. And one final piece, I have been a go-to person for government agencies, for nonprofits, when it comes to understanding what the needs of our community are. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with all of you on this issue.
Thank you. Next up, we have Johanna Garcia.
Hi, everyone. I'm Johanna Garcia. Thank you all for having me here, but mostly thank you for organizing. I think the strength of a community is always demonstrated when neighbors are actually willing to come to the table and have conversations with each other, and that's what you did, and that's what you continue to do. And it's at the heart of what I think governance should look like. I was born and raised in Washington Heights. I'm 46 years old, so I've seen more than four decades of what this neighborhood has gone through. And I've lived the issues that we talk about every day, championing myself firsthand. Many of you know, and if you don't know, I'll tell you now, that I was a city council staffer, I was Chief of Staff to then Councilmember Jackson. I was the Executive Director for the Black Latin American Caucus for the whole city. That was a citywide position. And I am now the Chief of Staff to State Senator Jackson. In between, I put together a staff council for workers' rights representation at City College as Executive Director of partnerships. I have built a not-for-profit in Washington Heights and Inwood to promote childcare and as well as to prevent adolescent pregnancy. I've been an Executive Director. I've built not-for-profits, and most importantly, I've built coalitions. This neighborhood is known for standing up. It's known for standing up when the status quo isn't good enough. And in this pandemic year, we have seen a complacency when it comes to noise and to the issue of public safety. When it came to our schools being under change, that status quo wasn't enough, and as President of the CEC 6, I walked 150 miles, and three weeks ago, we won $4 billion for our schools. As the co-founder of Uptown Community Democrats, I saw that we as a people did not have a bigger, a big enough voice in politics, working and as working people of this community. So I started a club and made sure that we included everyone. And as someone who felt that the IDC, something that people say is old news, but let me just say that is not old news. Corruption and alliance with the Republicans is something that stops us from progress is not old news when everyone is boasting about new legislation that we're able to pass. I built a coalition to bring down corruption, even though my current senator was threatening my job. It didn't matter because what matters is standing up and doing the right thing. I know how to bring people together. I did that as a co-founder, the steering committee for Northern Manhattan for Sale. And also, as a candidate in this race, I was the first, and I think I'm currently the only one, at least that has it on their website, that actually has a noise platform. The issue with noise is a failure of leadership from City Hall. The fact that you all had to come together and figure out yourselves through some like really tense conversations speaks a lot to this community, but also speaks a lot to the failure in leadership that we have seen and to the way that the precincts have said, "Hey, hands off. This is what we were told. Go tell your elected officials." Passing the buck has actually hurt our neighborhoods, and that stops now. So I was the first candidate, and I'm the only current candidate that actually has a platform on noise because I know it is a public safety issue. I know it's a public health issue, and I know it's a people issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Perez.
Perez is here. Thank you for putting this together. I'm amazed because of the turnout. It's very great to see so many people together. So great to see so many names, not the faces. I can't see it. You guys know me, most of you, because I will foot together for the rezoning to stop the absoning of Washington Heights and Inwood, mostly Inwood. And even though the low pass, we still were able to minimize the impact. I'm going to continue working on that. My name is Oscar Perez, once again, an immigrant from the Dominican Republic. I came here at a very young age, started working in a supermarket, worked full-time, but I completed my master degree in education in mathematics. Today is my father's birthday. See, today he's turned 70-something. Don't tell him I say his age. And after this, we're going to celebrate a little bit. But he retired as a taxi driver. I was just thinking about Mother's Day that just passed recently for Americans' Mother. We have different Mother's Day. But next week is Mother's Day, and I'm planning this in my mother because she worked two jobs, sometimes three jobs. And she'd never complain. I was just thinking today, she'd never complained, not even once, about how much she struggled to do it because even though she was a home attendance, she was part of the progress, and that's what I want to do, represent. I want to represent the whole community. I want to represent all the immigrants that were here. I love Washington Heights because we're such a diverse community. Quality of life is big. My platform on the last election, it was part of public safety, safer street, and quality of life, and I'm going to continue to do so. I'm working forward to work together. One of the reasons I'm running is because I want to see coming together to find solution, to be able to have the whole community, not a selective few, having input of the issues. I hear somebody mention about speed bombing Amsterdam Avenue. I live by Amsterdam Avenue, and that was, I was canvassing in the Sowis Station, 101st and St. Nicholas. And number one issue people mentioned was the noise complaint by Fairview Avenue, by Amsterdam Avenue. Unfortunately, I have requested myself several times a speed bomb on Amsterdam, but because it's, they both go by, you cannot do it. But we have to come together for solutions. You guys came up with a very good approach. I also have other approaches that I later on would love to discuss, to see how we're good. But my goal, and very short, is that I want to get the youth involved. I was talking to a few people on the street. Getting youth to talk to youth is the key. Getting alternative for them to be able to have a recreational and a space for them to have a going. Because who could say, "Let's get the youth out of the street," but I wanted the opportunity for them. So as an educator for over 20 years, I've been dealing with the youth, and I had a great platform ideas, but I would love your input even more. So how we could have successfully addressed the youth and the noise complaint in our district. That's only one of the quality of life issue we have. There's so many more.
Thank you. All right. That was a wonderful opening statement. So what we're going to do now is each of you will have two minutes to respond to questions. We're going to start pulling questions from chat, and then some moderators, we also have some of our own questions. But we're going to start with this question for everyone, and we're going to stay from the top for this question. So we're going to start with Mr. Bear again. Now, each candidate, first question is, each candidate, please explain what your role is in government, you know? So give everybody an idea because not everybody, believe it or not, is familiar with what you do and what your job is. So please explain what your role is in government, and then what powers you believe your potential office has to make improvements to quality of life in New York City. So what do you think as a city council member, you would have the power, your office would have the power to do to address these quality of life issues? And we'll start with Mr. Bear. Two minutes.
Thank you. I can't tell you how many times people spoke to me in the streets as I campaigned, "Oh, you'll get elected, and you'll disappear for the next four years. What's going on?" I promise you this, I'll continue walking the streets and talking to people. The role of the councilman can be aggravating in dealing with problems, but I will deal with it, and I will never hide, and I will never be a dug-up dug, okay? I'm focusing now on the noise, but I have plenty of other issues about recovering the economy, rebuilding our school systems, making sure all the kids are graduated with all the skills they need. When it comes to environment, making sure that we have rooftop solar panels everywhere and getting the city within 10 to 15 years off of oil can be done. But I want you to notice that almost every one of the candidates avoided the subject. I'm the one who right away got to the point, no one cares what my accomplishments are. I could go ahead and brag about I've done this, and I have a nice accomplishment. But what good does that do you when you're the one being woken up at night, when you're the one who fears walking the streets? I offer a real plan, and I have it, and I offer working with the police. They sit around, they're not acting. Bail reform has stopped them from working. Maybe they're upset about things. It's not working. And a lot of good it does when we're the ones who are suffering. I nearly got killed, okay? I know. I am one of you. That's why I'm running for office. I'm an attorney. I'm a Julia graduate. I have plenty of credentials. The thing you want to hear is I'm going to take action, okay? I have plenty of things. I welcome you all looking at my website. You can see a lot of wonderful ideas. But let me make it clear, this is one of the top issues. There are other things going on besides the noise. How about those guys putting in chemicals? And I read about it, and I talked to those guys in the streets. They put chemicals in there to intentionally be loud, okay? There are too many things that our politicians are avoiding. I'm getting right to the top. I'm sorry for being a little bit strong about this, but I want you to know I'm going to take care of this period. So there.
Thank you. Okay, so I remember Carmen de la Rosa.
So is the question, "What is my current role?"
Well, what is your role as a city council member? Explain what that role is so people understand what you would do. And then tell us what powers you think that that position would have to address the quality of life issues in New York City.
Thank you so much. So the role of a city council person is number one, first and foremost, in my opinion, is to bring the voices of the community to City Hall. We are tasked with legislating those voices into real-life solutions for our problems within the city charter, within the constitution that guides our city. We also pass a budget. There is a budget that passes in New York City. It happens in June, towards the end of June every month. And the city council people are tasked with making sure that that budget is passed. We also have oversight during hearings of not only the land use process, which is the process used to build, build in the city, make construction in the city, but also we have oversight over city agencies like the NYPD, like Department of Buildings, like HPD, like all of the agencies, the agency that deals with nightlife and media and small businesses. So that is the role of the city councilman. There's my puppy going crazy at the door. And that is the role of a city councilman. Now, what I think is needed for our community is access and equity. Those are two things that have been historically missing, I think, for this community and City Hall. I've been the Assemblymember in Albany for the last three and a half years or four years now. But the view in Albany is a more bird's-eye view because we legislate for the entire state. I think that this opportunity, the city council, for all of the candidates that are running tonight, is an opportunity to transform city government so that our voices are represented in that process. We don't have magical powers, right? Not all the issues can be solved at a swoop of a pen. But many of them can be solved by the community coming together and making sure that, for example, we are appointing strong candidates to our community boards, that we have oversight over the agency's spending, that resources are brought into our community for programming that has been historically missing here, too.
Thank you. Thank you. Angela Fernandez, please. Two minutes.
Sure. So the city council member, the actual member themselves are supposed to be a vehicle for what the community vision is. And what does that mean? That the city council member needs to truly be listening to what the community needs and then work with those that are directly impacted to either make the laws that need to be made or prioritize budgetary priorities, that there's a huge, huge power in creating what's called budgetary initiatives on a particular project that is well-funded, covers the entire city, but a large amount of money can come to the district directly on a particular issue. And so, you know, since we're here speaking about noise, and of course, we have to like break it up into different areas. There's noise related to transportation. There's noise related to music. There's noise related to construction itself, and each of it is going to have to take a different approach, and we have to work with the community to address each approach. So let's talk about the dirt bikes. So what is making the structure of where we live attractive for dirt bikes to be riding through our community? And by the way, I think it is important to note, we do speak, you know, I've heard a lot about enforcement. I have heard from very, very trusted sources that some of those people that are riding the dirt bikes are off-duty police officers. And so we have to be mindful of that when we think about the solutions themselves, if we have police officers themselves that are breaking the law. And so if we don't have that perspective and that context, we're going to have a hard time coming up with these solutions together. But from a structural standpoint, I know it's already been brought up before. I've brought it up for over a number of years, speed bumps. What do we need to do to get speed bumps into place? They exist all over the world, and they actually reduce speed and save lives, as one example. And there are many other solutions that can come together when we bring everyone involved. And I say include bringing to the people that we say are making noise. They have to be at the table with us in coming up with those solutions together because then they're more meaningful. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so Johanna Garcia.
Thank you. I think my colleagues have covered mostly what city council members do. I know that this community has felt an absence of an actual local representative. Council members are supposed to be your most local representatives, where you feel their presence, where you feel that they are very accessible, that you feel that you're being listened to, and with whom you feel you're not fighting to do the right thing by. Yes, there's a legislative power. Yes, there's a budgetary power. But underground, your city council member is supposed to be your biggest ally when they go into City Hall and into the chambers of the city council. When it comes to the way that city council and City Hall in particular has led these conversations, I mentioned it before, we do need to look at how these conversations have been led. These conversations have taken place in our community boards, and they've broken down because there is no real leadership as to nuance these conversations. It isn't about cultural differences. It isn't about racism. At the end of the day, everyone wants equality of life. Everyone believes in being safe when you're outside. Now, this isn't to say that racism isn't sometimes weaved into the conversation, but we can't be distracted by certain things in trying to get to solutions. I have, and I agree with Angela, and I have as part of my platform, we need speed bumps. I support the Furious Act as well. I support expanding the length and width of which in terms of speed cameras. But most importantly, I think that we need to really transform how we do things underground. We need to make sure that everyone knows there's an agency that's called New York City Mend. And the purpose of that agency is to assist in reconciling and mediating. It's a go-to place if a restaurant or there are issues on the block so that people don't feel they are taking care of this on their own. There's also a lack of inter-agency coordination. And again, that's because City Hall hasn't made it something that needs to happen. And as part of my platform, we need a lot more city agencies coming to the table and working in coordination together. We're working in silos, and we're not going anywhere.
Thank you so much. And now, Mr. Perez.
Good morning. The question is, what's the power that the city council has? And for me, the most important issue is that you are the local government. The local issues have to be addressed by the city council, which should be the frontline of the government, and it's extremely important. One of the issues of this issue having been solved is because of the connections of political interests sometimes the locals city council has with other politicians or maybe with the mayor or the Speaker of the House that don't allow them to speak up when they need to. As we have a power or leadership speaking up for the community and answer some of the questions, the comments in the chat, it's a very challenging solution that we have because some people asking for more police, but do we really want to have more policing in our street? It's a matter of working together. We need to expand the NCO program or local police project, but also together with the community. I know some community groups that could work, and they could go out there and speak to the youth. I would speak to the people that are making notes. But at the same time, we have to have some consequences for the people that are repeatedly violating the same act. I know, for example, their bar is a huge problem. It's not an easy solution. You can ask Chase then because, for God's sake, somebody crashed, but there's all the ways to adopt it. So it's a balance. We need to do more as a community. We're not to be responsible. We need to do more family outreach, but also the NYPD need to do more about it in a consistent way. But it's all about coming together and working together. It's not about blaming one or the other. Until a kid trying to look who is guilty instead of looking for the solution is going to continue. And this is something that's been happening for a while. I feel my first street when I moved in was 160th and Broadway. It was a very loud place, a street, but it was sold, and hopefully we could do it together.
Awesome. Thank you. So Dave, you said there's a question in the chat?
Uh, yes, several attendees have asked if each candidate could talk about how they intend to balance the need to address the noise problem against the criminalization of subjective behavior in marginalized communities.
Okay. And with that, we're gonna go in reverse and we're gonna start with Mr. Perez.
Can you repeat the question one more time, Dave?
Uh, sure. It was the it was to uh address how you could uh deal with the noise problem while balancing it against the criminalization of subjective behavior in marginalized communities.
Yeah, again, yes, they we have to be careful with criminalization, especially in our community. And that's why we have to look for uh approach that are have to be able to manage with this solution. As a matter of fact, I would know was this limited or what we could do? I know that, for example, it's really hard to now give tickets or someone for noise complaint. So but we have to find for approach. Maybe uh you guys uh for the what he ta- noise tax for has very good suggestions. I'm gonna look for more with the input of the community for how to deal with that. To me, one of the best approach is to have community members talking to the people that are violating or casting those noises. Because what I don't want community members to go, the regular people to go and talk to them because to avoid confrontation, it has happened before and we don't want that to happen. We don't want to criminalize this kind of behavior, but at the same time, there have to be some consequences. What consequence is going to be exactly? I want to sit down at the table and figure out. Because as a teacher, I'll learn rules without consequences are no rules. So it's a balancing act. One more time, we need to go and speak to them. I will form a task for myself from my city council office to daily in a daily basis. That task for you going to be for you and a daily basic approaching the youth that are committing or perpetrating those kind of behavior, tend to this and and educating. And they could see the they behavior has consequences and admitting the quality of life in our neighborhood.
Awesome. Thank you. So now we're gonna go to Johanna Garcia.
Hey, if I uh understand the question correctly, um we definitely have to move towards non-confrontational approaches, uh not just because we want to be careful of not criminalizing already marginalized communities, uh but also because in many cases, it's just isn't safe. Uh, when we think about uh separating the issues that we're talking about noise, if you think solely right now about dirt bikes, first of all, they are illegal. The word dirt is part of that word, dirt bikes. They belong on dirt. They don't belong anywhere uh in urban streets. And it is, it is very difficult to even even accept that NYPD doesn't have an understanding of one, where they're coming from, two, where they're being stored, and three, their pathways. We know, it's like we're living in this neighborhood, we can kind of like time our clocks to it where we know when they're gonna pass by, we know their routes. That's why I think, yes, being smart about where we put speed bumps is important, but also being smart about uh where we have kind of checkpoints to make sure that they don't come into our streets. And what unfortunately, what's starting to happen in the outskirts of Manhattan is that it's creating a market. So you actually have now uh stores that are selling dirt bikes. And that's something that we have to make sure uh we make uh uninviting uh in in our neighborhoods. But also, let's talk about our faith leaders and let's talk about tennis association as well as block associations. I think it's really important to pull uh our community together and to empower our communities and the escalating um uh tactics in getting to know our neighbors. The first point that a neighbor gets to uh talk to someone from across the street should not be a point of conflict. There should have been a point of building a community with each other, understanding that we all care about the same thing, and that includes each other's safety, um and that there are ways to come to solutions together. Again, that takes really changing the culture of thought of governance in this neighborhood. Leadership is really important, but I think through non-confrontational ways. And again, coordination among all the uh all the agencies in the city because there are agencies that could do more to help us, and there is leadership that we need to do more uh to get us through this summer. That needs to happen. We need a change of culture and we need someone who dares to do that.
Thank you. Okay, so next we have Angela Fernandez.
Same yours. Thank you. So I I do want to speak specifically about um, oh, thank you for the timing, uh precinct thirty-four. Uh precinct thirty-four is um notoriously corrupt. It had a serial rapist um uh who was a police officer for years um until he was finally caught. There have been numerous um allegations of police brutality from the thirty-fourth precinct, specifically of one um uh police officer most recently was was called on a noise complaint. And believe me, I understand that. I'm not, um, I'm very empathetic to the issue. Um, uh, he put someone in a chokehold, and we know chokeholds um lead to death. So when you have that combination um existing within a police precinct, the police precinct may not be the place where we can seek help um and assistance. So with that in mind, and I'm gonna go back to dirt bikes, um because it seems that that's what we're, you know, that's the theme. And I want to just say that there was what I love about our community and I love about this task force, that um everyone here is trying to find a solution, and I think trying to find a solution with an open heart and and an open mind. And um a a woman um uh named Deborah James uh put early on in the chat an article about NP uh an article about what the city of Baltimore did around dirt bikes. Um, an article NPR. I took a quick moment to take a look at it. It was an incredible solution. The idea was to actually link um kids who were riding the dirt bikes and actually bring in the science, the engineering, bringing in STEM, teaching them about this, and then also creating a space where they could ride their dirt bikes, as to Joanna's point, um in the dirt. And I think that there, you know, when we think about how all of this is connected, when we also think about, I see only have two seconds, more maybe, you know, um unwanted activity in the street, but we also have a huge divestment in community activities, sports, music. There's no community center for our kids. We have to talk about all of this in its totality. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Now Carmen de La Rosa. Oh, I'll unmute you, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. Um, so I definitely think that we need to make sure that there is a balanced approach. I think there's a difference between someone who's playing, you know, music from their car and someone who's driving recklessly down a street. People who are driving recklessly down a street are breaking a law, right? And the law is reckless driving. Those people, there should be enforcement for those people because all of us need to be safe when we're crossing the street. We heard last week of a of a member of our community, an older member of our community, who was literally beat up by a person who was riding a a motorcycle and almost ran him over and then got off the motorcycle and beat him up. That is abuse. We cannot tolerate that type of abuse for our community, and we cannot make that commonplace here. So we definitely have to work with the NYPD to make sure that there is enforcement around uh that type of abusive behavior in our community. But let's remember, this is a community that has been impacted, disproportionately impacted by broken windows policing as well. And so we do need that balance. I think that, as some of the colleagues have already stated, we need to be investing in our community, right? But we we know that many of the youth in our communities don't have, for example, a skate park where they can go out and 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 ride in on a skateboard. They may not have the these spaces where they can easily access um a bike track, right? Those are investments that the city council person can make to our community and has the ability to make. I also think that there's space for um us within the building code to make sure that we are equipping our buildings to be more sustainable, to have more noise mitigation uh for other uh people who may live on corridors that do not have, for example, the ability to put a speed bump on them. We have seen, I have requested speed bumps myself on certain streets. If there's a bus route, they won't put them there. So we need to be creative about the solutions that we're bringing. Um, and I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation. It's all encompassing, and I agree that it's a multi-agency response, including parks, including NYPD, including buildings. So I'm looking forward to that.
Yes, thank you. And I ask candidates, please try to stay to your time as much as possible. We want to get as many questions as possible. We're a little over because we started a little late, but thank you for your patience. I appreciate all of you. James Bear, Mr. Bear, you're up.
You know, this reminds me of a of a joke one of my staff made. We were standing around and he screamed to someone walking on the sidewalk, hey lady, get off the sidewalk. That's reserved for the motorcycles, you know, see what things will come to. Uh, look, besides taking care of business, you know, we can offer them places and parks and racetracks. We offer alternatives. I I mean, I am sympathetic, just not on the streets. You know, I'm an attorney and I've worked, I'm trained. I went to a public interest law school because I wanted to be in politics. I'm trained to work with other lawyers and to negotiate and work with people and find solutions. We're going to find a solution. I also have to negotiate with the police to make sure they do their job. Yeah, there was a serial rapist, we know that. And there was a disaster that someone was killed. But you know what? People have to sleep at night. And you know what? I could have ended up in the hospital or dead. There's dozens and dozens, not hundreds of people who were across the street. When you want to show sympathy for the the victim, you want to show sympathy for the criminal. I mean, we have to take care of business. I'm not looking to put these people in prison. I'm just looking to say you did something wrong, we're gonna take away your dirt bike. You don't have a license, we're gonna let the law take care of things. I mean, it's gotta be a point where right is right and wrong is wrong. I I just feel like these are my opponents are intelligent people, but if you vote for them, we're gonna get four more years of the same thing, a deteriorating economy, more ineffective police not doing the job, more noise, fireworks, July fourth is no longer a day, it's a month. The police aren't doing the job. I mean, because one was a rapist doesn't mean you can't work with the police. We still have to figure it out. You balance let them do their darn job, and at the same time, weeding out allow us to racist people. We have to do both. We have to make sure that people can sleep at night. We've got to stop the problem, stop avoiding it. And I think everyone, except myself, has avoided the problem. I've got a plan. I'm gonna turn it into legislation, then turn it to action. I'm the only one who's done this. If you want to get rid of the noise, I'm your guy, period.
Well, thank you so much. So now we're gonna get into another question I want to ask all of you. People in the chat are talking a lot about the things they're experiencing from the con- from the fireworks that I can say have started again. Um, and uh, you know, businesses with outdoor speakers, uh with DJs, things like that. Um, people blasting music from cars, having street parties, um uh all of those sort of issues. And they're asking, why hasn't anything been done? And in and in keeping with that, I want to ask you all this question. What factors do you feel have stood in the way of this office addressing these community concerns around noise? Because there's a lot of community feeling that from the office, from the city council offices, that it really hasn't been addressed, and it hasn't been addressed, the community concerns around it have sort of been ignored. So what do you feel have stood in the way of it being addressed? And what will you do differently that will make this office more responsible to community concerns around around these issues? What are you gonna do about responding to people saying fireworks are going off? Businesses are blasting music outside, which is not allowed, actually. Uh, you know, what are you gonna do differently? And why do you think, first answer, why do you think that it has been a challenge in addressing this in this office? And then what do you plan to do different? And we'll start with the top again. So we will start with uh with James Bear.
Thank you. There there's a tendency with our police to say, we're not gonna deal with trivial things. Noise, people waking, the neighbor blasting, uh, we have to deal with the felonies. We have to deal with the burglaries and the murders. And my answer is, you need to deal with everything. The police are not dealing with these things. I think we need to start escalating their response rate to noise problems, let alone these dangerous cars going through red lights. Why are they? Why aren't they standing at corners? Uh, and so we have to negotiate with the police department and the union. I mean, there's a lot of complications there. We have to get them to do their job. And and I I would have a a blue ribbon discussion, a committee, working with them, working with the community, finding out all the problems, working with the police and find out why you can't do it. The bail reform is part of it. And I've talked to the police officers. Why do we arrest people when we know the court's gonna put them out in the street anyway? And so their attitude is, I don't want to bother them. We have to address the serious problems of the police being demoralized, being blamed for things that some of them didn't do. They're hardworking people with families, and they're being blamed for a few bad actions. We have to have some balance. So I would say the answer is, we've got to tell them, you know what? Someone can't sleep at night, that's very important. You need to address it. I think we need to create a specific unit that deals specifically with noise and acts on it. And people need to know, you keep doing it, you're gonna get ticketed. It's gonna take your car, we're gonna shut down your radio. I mean, I just feel compassion for the thousands of people. They've got to be up at three in the morning, got to go to work the next day. Who's speaking on their behalf? I will speak on your behalf. There's gotta be balance and compassion.
Thank you. And uh, some of the more Carmen de La Rosa. Oh, sorry. There you go.
Thank you. Well, you know, I am an elected official. I've been elected to in in Albany, right, to deal with um some of the issues of our community, although not hyper-local. I have been at the forefront of receiving the emails from our communities, receiving the phone calls, and also calling the NYPD when fireworks are going off in our communities at all hours of the night. I've emailed, I've called the NYPD at one o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, when all of us are sitting awake. And I think that there's a two, there's two reasons why at the city level, at the local level, um, the some of these issues have not been addressed. Number one, I think that, you know, leadership in our city comes from the top. It comes from the mayor. Uh, there has to be a specific leadership that is pushed on whoever will be our next mayor to make sure that this is an issue of that comes to the forefront, that this is an issue that is priority, um, that the safety and the noise issues and the firecrackers and the transportation infrastructure that we need here to slow things down and quiet things down are things that are priority. I don't think that that has been the priority of the de Blasio administration as of yet. And number two, I think that um we need um a local representative, and it's part of the reason why I'm running for city office, is because we need people that are gonna be focused on the hyper-local issues, right? We need people that are gonna dedicate their time to not think about the bigger issues of the state, although those things are important, but that are gonna look at the issues of our community, block by block, neighborhood by neighborhood, family by family, building by building. And that is the commitment that I have, that is something that I want to do. I think um I think that having uh our com- community boards that are representative of the of the entire community, resources for our small businesses so that these issues are addressed, um, and investment in our community are going to be the things that are gonna get us out of this predicament. I do think, however, that it has to be a community-driven conversation where everyone takes personal responsibility for their failings, for their lack of discipline in many, in many cases, but also for understanding of one another and who we are and how we occupy and live in this community. Um, so those are tough conversations that we have to have them, and I'm committed to having that conversation and and doing that with our with our community.
Thank you. Okay, Angela Fernandez.
So as I said again, I mean, noise is a very big and broad issue. And so one of the things that I can do is what I did when I ran the Northern Manhattan Coalition for Migrant Rights for ten years. It was a frontline organization that dealt with walk-in issues, thirty to fifty people walking in with very complex issues. And I set up the office so that we were addressing and answering those issues in real time. And if we couldn't, then we would identify uh who would be able to or what entity would be able to provide that solution. So constituent services is the number one and most important thing, which is something that I know that the community needs and wants from their local elected officials, especially at the city council level. So with regard to the immediate noise, which so many are diverse, there's some some noise that is going to require a structural change, that will require making changes to the geography of our neighborhood or the streetscape um specifically. Other ones that are more um, uh, let's say, uh immediate, loud music at one in the morning, that kind of thing. Since we know it may be happening or it's going to happen, then I would put all of the resources possible and even and be a convener to bring people together on those streets and on those blocks and look at what Joanna said. There are religious leaders that garner a tremendous amount of respect by the community and bring people together, have many task forces have on 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 blocks with block associations. So you have the people that are also potentially making the noise coming together to develop the solutions together because we have to understand where everyone is coming from. Each person is an expert of their own reality. And if we can't take a moment to understand each person's reality, we're not gonna be able to come up with the solutions. The other solu- the solutions will be short-term, and we're just gonna have the same problems come back over and over again.
Thank you. Okay. Johanna Garcia.
Hi. Uh, so, um, I've reflected on that question for a very long time. And even when you asked it, Tanya. Um, I'm a very straightforward person and I will tell you that first before I go in there, the issue of noise as a public safety and public health issue uh, has overwhelmed, um, cities across the nation. Let's just start there so that we just kind of have a perspective. It doesn't mean that we accept our reality, but just have some perspective, um, because I think context is very important. And I again, will repeat that there has been a lack of leadership. But honestly, how do we expect neighbors and people on the ground to unite and get along when elected leaders have not actually shown that by example? There hasn't been a united voice as to how to address this among electeds. There hasn't been an approach that has been about inclusive, being inclusive of all voices. Um, and there hasn't been a will to actually make this a priority. The second reason why there has been impediment for Uptown to address this is that not enough people care. All of you care, but you're banging your head against the wall because the electeds that have proximity to City Hall, to the precinct, and yes, those are powerful voices that can ignore the, the local electeds, yes. But no one has really had the will to unite and actually make City Hall or the precincts, the respective precincts, because it's 34th and the 33rd, listen and do something and actually call them out on their scapegoating. When they keep saying our hands are tied, we can't do anything. We have to begin organizing on, on the ground. Yes, I've talked about, uh, block associations empowering them, tennis associations, everybody started doing that work, but we have to hold ourselves accountable on every level so that we don't have these impediments in getting things done.
Absolutely. Mr. Perez.
Oh, tough question. Well, there's been challenges in many issues. Firstly, pandemic. The pandemic brought so many issue like people lost their job. And, and like you were saying, kids were big kids. For example, as the moment is also being a challenge because the recreational industry has been closed. And the young people want to go out, they want to go have fun. And the clubs are closed as part of the issue. That's one of the issues. Accountability is being a biggest problem. Accountability from the NYPD, then they're responsible, but also the lack of responsibility for us. Lack of alternative. We had to have a community for youth. So what they have to go there and go at it. Because we're divided. That's part of the issue as well. Because people, some of the people take the noise issue as the biggest issue in the community, but sometimes they don't see that with the other issues. And we have a lot of issues in our community. Noise one of them. I really appreciate it. Safety is another one. So we have to come together, not only in one issue, but in several issues together. That solution as a leadership, I will try to bring together both sides to the table. Let's work together on several issues. Not about your issue or mine. I can speak up only about noise, but I cannot be quiet when something happened one day first. So when something happened in San Nicholas. Let's think about differing approach. Business, I know some bodegas owners, maybe some liquor store that have parties over the overnight. Talk to them. One of the solution, what was used in school, you have to address the problem before start. So cancel solution before the noises started. Go next day and speak to them about what happened last night. Other city has used drums. Let's buy drums and put it to go as it and address those issues. Those are creative idea or how to address those kind of solutions. I will go even more. I have a youth force, task force to visit the people that were, that were checked as doing the noise. I would visit their house and speak to them about their behavior. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to have one more question and then we're going to have you give your closing statements because I know people, we started a little late, but I want to be respectful of your time. Uh, but we are combining questions. So we're getting people's perspectives in here. Um, the, the question I want to ask you all is this, the, the task force has suggested certain solutions. And I want to ask you of the solutions that we suggested, which ones, which one do you think is would be a priority for you? Which one do you think is most important to do? Okay. So one of the things that we talked about was establishing an office of equality of life so that there is a sort of container, uh, similar to the office of nightlife, there's a container to sort of deal with, uh, community concerns around this. And, and, and then we also talked about updating the city noise code that hasn't been updated since 2007. We also talked about, um, deploying technology and some of us in the chat were mentioning, people in the chat were mentioning, why are we using some of this technology to measure this noise? To capture it and figure out what's going on and where. Um, so employing more of this type of technology to measure noise. And then a fourth thing that we suggested was uh, really dealing with the parks in terms of deploying, getting more funding for our pep officers to patrol the parks because Ms. De La Rosa did mention the, uh, attack um, in, in, in Wood Hill Park on the elderly man. So of, of those things, increasing the budget for pep so they can be there and present in, and, and more extended hours. So that's the fourth thing. So of all of those four things, which would you say it, it would be a priority, it's most important for you? And we will start, uh, we started the last time with, uh, we'll start Mr. Perez. We, we go backwards this time.
Well, the more priority would be in technology, very creative. There's so many things, issues, but increasing the budget and technology. I, I would go further, like creative solution that I seen other cities. You could put technology ahead of time on the hotspot, let's call it, where you know that the noise is going to happen. We know what's going to happen. We know it's going to happen at 190 and Sagnick, exactly that corner. We know it's going to happen at 185 and Westward, 186 and Audible. We could think ahead of time and use the technology, please. I saw this video, which is very interesting. They use it in Dominican Republic in Ecuador. When you have this camera with a speaker on top. So the police or the community who address the people doing the noise from this speaker. I could say, Mr. Ramirez, I seen you there drinking, you making a loud noises. Can you be, please consider of your neighborhood? It works in city with very little resources. So we have to be created using technology, hands-on approach. You've spoken to you, to me, that's like the most priority.
Thank you. Thank you for being so succinct. We really appreciate that. Johanna Garcia.
Hi, um, Tanya, that's a really difficult quest, uh, question because there is no way that we're going to solve these problems with a siloed solution. It just won't work. It has to be an interplay of different solutions because there are different kinds of noises that they're produced. They have different kinds of root causes. Uh, so I, I, and I'm sorry, but some unsatisfactory response, but I would prioritize everything. I, I really do believe in a government that can walk and chew gum at the same time. There's no reason why you can't start on one while you work on another. I will caution. I think technology is an incredibly, uh, useful tool in society. I have to also say that because my daughter is majoring in technology. Uh, but I also am concerned about privacy issues. So I would just really want to be careful about safeguarding, uh, the privacy issues, uh, of Uptown. Um, there was a, a question, um, in the chat that I do want to clarify. I am by no means putting the pressure on, on the neighbors of the residents or even tennis associations or block associations to address the issue that government, uh, has been lackluster in responding to. Uh, but I do believe in creating a culture and spaces that are uninviting, uninhabitable. Kind of say, we are here, this is our neighborhood, go elsewhere. Um, so it isn't, um, uh, like an open, open season, uh, for everyone. Uh, so, you know, uh, I, I am here to work with all of you. That is not rhetoric. You all have great, um, ideas. Uh, my platform, um, came a few days before, uh, on the noise level, uh, before your platform was, uh, was released. But it, it makes sense that there is so much overlay because I've been listening to you. I've been here. I hear the noises. Um, the, the task force for the fireworks needs to start now. We're late as it is and making sure that it happens because we hear it. Um, but I'm here with you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. So next we have Angela Fernandez.
Thank you. I, I would, um, uh, agree with Joanna that it's all interconnected, these solutions. Um, uh, we can't just pick one and say that that's the priority. There are a couple of things that I would like to uplift actually. So there's something called the Office of the Nightlife that was created years ago, the Night Mayor. And one of the biggest components that it has is around addressing noise at night. And so I think that it's, um, my understanding is that it's underfunded. Um, it has already tools in place, um, uh, to address these issues. And I think we need to just look at that. And that's what I would want to look at as city council member. Is this something that should be funded? That could be a vehicle to really help address, um, uh, these issues. Secondly, I saw a couple of comments about.
Mr. Perez, I'm sorry. Can you mute yourself? Thank you. Mr. Perez, can you mute yourself?
I apologize. I'm trying to do that.
All right. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I, you know, I want to address the, 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 around, um, the 34th precinct. I'm the, what I'm trying to say is that if you have corruption in a governmental entity, do not count on them for help. That's what I'm trying to say. I'm not speaking specifically about the police, the brutality. It's just, it's an endemic issue. And so I think that we just need to be, you know, realistic about that. That's what I'm trying to share here. Because everyone's very upset that they're not responsive. And you know, a lot of it has to do with the corruption that exists there. So we have to be mindful of that. Um, uh, secondly, when it comes to bringing in the community and talking about this, to get an understanding of the why of the noise. Again, there's many different things. We're talking dirt bikes, but then we're talking about noise on the block, um, or noise from apartments next door. So those are two different things. Let's talk about the noise on the block and apartments next door. No, I'm not saying let's have them all come to the community board. Um, uh, to me, I'm talking about developing real relationships with the people on the block that are making these noises and coming up with, with understanding and then coming up with a solution. It may sound Pollyannish, but let me tell you something. It's actually what works. It actually what gets us the lasting solutions. And I stand by that.
Yes. Uh, Carmen De La Rosa.
Thank you. Thank you for muting me again. Um, I agree with what my colleagues have said. This is a multi-pronged, uh, problem and we need multi-pronged solutions. I definitely think that the noise code needs to be looked at as well as building codes, as I mentioned earlier, um, in my, in my remarks. Um, the noise code hasn't been updated for quite some time. And I think there's definitely a need to do that because it is through those laws that we're able to have added enforcement. Um, and then I also, uh, uh, agree with the creation of the Office for Quality of Life Issues. Um, let's think about how that, uh, office can work in different communities because they'd be tasked with going all across the city and each community is unique. So I, I like to just add that little point to it. But I think that, um, overall, because this is a multi-layered problem, we need to make sure that all agencies are working together. As we're sitting here having this conversation, I'm also thinking about agencies like Consumer Protections who are, don't have that much of a presence in our communities, but could have a presence in this, in dealing with issues of noise. For example, they, they are the ones that oversee, for example, valet parking. Valet parking is a problem in our community. It also causes noise. It causes commotion. It causes distraction. So each and every agency must come to the table. Um, and then we must study how noise happens, where it comes from, um, in our community. And in order to understand the real solutions, I agree with the colleagues here who said there's different areas from where noise emanates. There's different areas where noise pollution comes from. Um, and we have to have specific, uh, plans for each thing. I, we, a few weeks ago, we did the Transportation Alternatives Forum. I thought that was a great forum because it talked about public safety. It talked about the need to bring, uh, resources and infrastructure into our community to make our streets safe. If people slow down, we will see that some, that our streets will also quiet down. So that is something that I also support. But I so far have been, um, really impressed with the recommendations that this task force has put together. And I'm looking forward to working with you all to make it a reality.
Thank you. Mr. Bear.
Look, um, everyone makes good points, but there are people who are speaking tonight. You've been in power for the last two or more years. You had your chance and everything's a mess. Why, why should anyone believe that it's going to change now? We need fresh air. We need fresh ideas. And I present that. Now, a few points. First of all, um, yeah, we need to change the noise codes and we need to make sure there's enforcement. Next. The music blasting at night, like I said, the police need to start addressing these things. Quality of life has to be addressed just like felonies. Now, we've raised generations of kids who have horrible environments. I grew up in the suburbs. We had trees and baseball fields. And they have parking lots with basketball hoops. And I, I walk around, you know, with the 170s, the 160s and Amsterdam. It's not nice, uh, like up in the other areas. I mean, they deserve to have parks. We have endless development. Same thing in Inwood. Every square inch has to be a building. God forbid, why don't we actually take an empty lot and put in some park, park benches, some trees, give people quality of life? How about we give all those people with, with the motorcycles more sports, more events, more things to do, more quality alternatives? Um, we need more grass in the community. We have endless developments. Okay. It's just, there's so much we can do to make the community nicer and to work with those people who need to make noise in the streets and give them better alternatives, to give them work, to give, gee, maybe we need a movie theater in this area. Maybe we need a bowling alley. I mean, we have so little going on in terms of recreation. I mean, things that I, I've lived here for over 20 years, but the suburbs have things and better schools and better qualities and facilities. I think we can even put an amusement park. There used to be an amusement park in the east part of the island, like a hundred years ago. We can really do a lot of things. It's a kind of it. The eastern part of Inwood is just warehouses and ugly. You want to develop, how about put an amusement park and some beautiful houses and a couple of acres here and there of land? There's so many things. We've got to think out of the box and do things to. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, uh, Ms. De La Rosa, I do see your hand. I will allow you to respond to, to ask your question just out of fairness. You could do, do your closing. Um, and so that's what we're going to do right now. We're going to give closing statements. So because we're so far, we're far behind a little bit because we started late, um, we, uh, want to, we will give you a minute uh, to close out. So, you know, thank you for your understanding of that. Um, and so we're going to start, uh, at the bottom. I'm sorry, at the top again. Mr. Bear, you're first.
One minute, right?
One minute.
Okay. I'm the only one here who's presented a plan, nine-point plan. You can contact me. I'll send it to you. It's on my website. I will turn that into law in City Hall. I am very good at negotiating, getting along with people, even with opposite points of view. I know how to do this stuff. And I, one, I love interacting with the public. I already have a policy. You can have a problem, you talk to my office, my staff will be responsive. Uh, there's, this is going to become the law. And I'm the only one here who's given a document here outlining the plan. This is about noise. That's the focus tonight. I've got a plan. I'm going to take action. I'll be working with everyone, community, police. I know how to negotiate. I think I'm a pretty fair guy and I get along with people. And I want you to trust, things are going to be different when you elect me. I'm going to be a guy who's going to work hard for you. He'll be around for four years, not disappearing. I'm walking around now handing out cards. I'm going to walk around for the next four years, talking to people everywhere. You have my word. I'm going to be very different from what you've been seeing in the last 10 years. I'm going to show you what a good leader can do, what intelligence, creativity and love and God and religion can do. You have my word on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. De La Rosa. Sorry.
Okay. Well, first, let me just address something that was said before by the colleague. I felt that he was talking to me when he was talking about people that have been elected. We need to understand government and what the functions of each government official are. As a state legislature, uh, that works in Albany with state agencies, um, we are limited in our influence and in our ability to legislate local ordinances that deal with noise. That is why I'm running for the New York City Council. All of us here have a responsibility to the community that we love in order to make sure that we move forward, uh, our community, that we are not, you know, impeded by not having quality of life, not having peace of mind at night, that we can all sleep, that our pets and our children don't live in fear when they hear the fireworks at the, in our, in our windows, um, starting now. So we, I am committed to these issues because I am of this community. I live in this community. I walk the streets of this community. And my whole entire life and professional career have been dedicated to ensuring that our community moves forward. What you will have from me is a city councilwoman who listens, whose door is always open and who will go to bat for you in City Hall. So I'm looking forward to earning your support.
Thank you. Angela.
Thank you. Thank you again, uh, for this, uh, for this opportunity. So it's really important to have a leader that understands that it takes time to, for example, disentangle the bureaucracies that should actually be working for us. It's something that I've done before and something that I would do again as a city council member and really understanding how to take all of that apart and bring it back together so that we can actually have. And really understanding how to take all of that apart and bring it back together, so that we can actually have meaningful solutions. When we were fighting for the sanctuary laws, we were told many times that that was impossible, that could never happen. But we were able to make it happen, and we did it actually, working with people who are directly impacted and pushing and pressuring, but getting ICE and DHS to change their practices that would protect a lot more people. So this is what we need to do, this is what I would wanna do around noise. There are many complex issues with it, but I know that we can come up with these solutions. And we can come up with it together, so that the entire community is living with peace, that the entire community is feeling safe. I am a hundred percent confident that we can do it, but we need leadership at that city council level to be able to work on the ground with people who have, who already has a track record doing that, and combining that with governmental solutions.
Thank you. Okay, next Johanna.
Thank you. Um, you know, we didn't get to even talk about residential parking. And, and maybe that doesn't sound like it's part of the noise issue, but as I continue to say, it is. We are experiencing a culture of accepting uh, a, a kind of life uh, that is substandard, and, and we need better. Uh, it talks about accountability, it talks about actually prioritizing, prioritizing our neighborhoods. There are things that go way better in other parts of the city. I know that. I have the experience in government to kinda have a bird's eye view uh, and see the inequities in the way that things move along in government, in processes, in city agencies. And the response to our neighborhood is a response of neglect and abandonment. And it is time to move forward, and, and their ideas, the ideas are already on the table. You have the ideas, I have them in my platform. I'm sure we can come up with more ideas. There's, has to be the will and the courage to really confront um, the challenges that we have before us.
Thank you. Mr. Perez.
Thank you for putting this together. I learned a lot. Quality of life issue, the noise is number one, but it's so much more than that. It's crime, it's, it's clean street, we need to do better. Uh, I live in it. I live in Amsterdam, by one ninety, which is constantly really uh, uh, dirt buys and, and, and raising, or nine, or a day long. I used to live in one sixty, so I know what quality of life issues we're, we're talking about. Long-term education, youth outreach, number one. Short-term accountability, accountability on both parts, from the community or the people that were acting the reckless list, but also from the AYPD that they have to do more. It have to be working together. That's the only way to get a solution, working together. It cannot be longer us against them. I was prepared, long-term resident for this community, teacher for over twenty years, I'm looking forward to representing you in the City Hall.
Thank you. First of all, I wanna thank all of our candidates for New York City Council District Ten. Um, you have a large part of our community, and so, you know, we really appreciate you coming here, so that the people who live here and will be potential voters can hear what you're thinking around the issue that is extremely important to them. Thank you for your patience and your time, and we look forward to continuing as a task force to engaging with you around these issues. We appreciate you and thank you so much, and uh, you know, we, we are so happy you were here with us. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.